Hello, everybody. I'm going to call this City Council to order along with the other agencies that we serve on. So, welcome aboard to this meeting today on November 15th. And again, I just want to say thank you to all of our veterans that are here. And we have another veteran in the back. And obviously, the veterans are with us on the phone or on Zoom. As we traditionally began, we'll begin with the invocation and the pledge allegiance, and allow the city clerk to announce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Maggie Burbankinoki of Montevista Unitarian Universalist Congregation, and the pledge will be led by Councilmember Martinez.
Great. Nice to see you again, Maggie.
Thank you.
Please stand.
Good to be here. As we gather in this place now dedicated to the governance of our beloved city of Montclair, we let go of the many distractions that fill our days and turn our attention to the good work we are called here to do. How fortunate we are to be in these seats of both humble service and powerful authority. May we honor the ancestors of this land and those descendants yet to come with our integrity and our love for this place that we know is home. May each and every individual in our city find warm welcome and deep belonging among us, and may all of our actions bring us closer to peace, healing, and growth. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have roll call?
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here, and I will need to be leaving right at 7:45 today.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Ru.
Present.
Mayor Dutrey.
Mayor Dutrey is here quietly. Okay, next item will be public comment. This is an opportunity for the members of the public to address the City Council. My name is not on the agenda, or to speak on a consent calendar or business item that's on the agenda. As you may know, the public has a maximum of five minutes to address the City Council, or if it's one or more consent calendars, a total of five minutes. And then if you're on the Zoom, we ask that you please raise your hand so we can see that you want to speak. And if you're calling on the phone, we ask you to please dial *9, again to request to speak under the public comment or consent calendar business item. And if, of course, if in the audience, we ask that you please complete a speaking card. A speaking card will be out at the front door. It's a blue card, and just submit that in order to speak under public comments or a business item. Due to the Brown Act, the City Councils prohibit to discuss any item that is not on the agenda. And at this time, I'm going to ask the city clerk if she's got any speakers today.
We have one speaker in the audience this evening, and two hands are raised on Zoom.
Okay.
So first, I have the card for Laura Ensberg.
Okay, Laura.
Sorry, Lauren.
Lauren, okay.
Get it all the time, it's okay.
Well, sorry about that.
No problem. How are you? Good evening, mayor and City Council members. My name is Lauren Ensberg, and I would like to share a few updates with you on behalf of Chaffee College. The first update is regarding Montclair to College, also known as MTC. MTC is a college readiness program brought to Montclair High School students and their families by the city of Montclair and Chaffee College. If completed successfully, MTC provides students with the opportunity to earn a two-year paid scholarship to Chaffee College, a value of approximately $4,500. This scholarship includes tuition, textbooks, parking permits, and enrollment fees. The deadline to apply this academic year is March 1st, 2022. The second update is regarding Measure P. Measure P is a bond measure that was passed in 2018, which will help repair, upgrade, and improve all three Chaffee College campuses. Phase 1 updates include the following projects. At the Rancho campus, a new library and learning commons, new campus center, Michael Alexander Campus Center renovation, swimming pool renovation, campus-wide boiler replacement. The following projects at our Chino campus, an instructional building 1. The following at the new Fontana campus, campus-wide parking and vehicular circulation, a welcome center and library, instructional building 1, automotive tech building, and operations and maintenance building. And the following at the new Ontario campus, master planning and campus development. The third update is Chaffee College has recently been named a 2021 Equity Champion of Higher Education for its work in awarding associate degrees for transfer to Latinx students on campus. The fourth and final update is Hispanic Outlook on Education has ranked Chaffee College the number four California community college to grant associate's degrees to Hispanic students and the state's number five college in Hispanic enrollment. The rankings were included in the magazine's Top Colleges and Universities for Hispanics edition released October 12th. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and then on Zoom, we have Eleni Christensen.
Hello. Hello.
Hello, good evening. Eleni Christensen here.
Go ahead.
Good evening, council and staff. I just had one observation to share. It appears that the Montclair City website, as far as the council meetings and some other meetings that are on the calendar, are not synced up to what is a mobile-friendly version of the website. This has caused me to miss a few meetings I would have liked to meet. For example, if you look on the, I guess the desktop version would be of the city's website, you will notice the city council meeting is there today with no link to the attached agenda. You will also see that, or I will see, and I'm looking at it, that the real estate committee meeting that was happening today at 5:30 is not on the city council meeting. Again, this is looking at the website from the PC or laptop platform, not from the mobile website. So I just wanted to point that out. I just realized this for myself today, and so this would be helpful if whoever's doing our city's website ensures that the mobile-friendly is also meeting the desktop laptop-friendly version, so we're able to access and download the documents from both platforms. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and I apologize, and I think our staff will take a look at that. And if you'd like to contact me, the city clerk's office, if I talk to her, maybe she can talk you further and just make sure they understand the concerns that you have raised. Thank you for calling.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I think the last one.
All right, next is Ruby Long.
Hello, Ruby. Are you there, Ruby? There you are.
Yes, hello, hi.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
It's nice to meet you.
Hi.
It was nice to meet you at one of the events. I finally had a chance to meet you.
Pleasure meeting you too. Pleasure meeting you too. I love seeing all of you guys.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to announce that we're going to have our yearly annual Christmas open house, so we're really excited about that. Finally, we weren't obviously able to have it the last two years due to COVID, so this time we will have it in person, and it's going to be Thursday, December 2nd, from 5:30 to 7:30. It's going to be at 14,000 City Center Drive. We do ask that you RSVP, because there will be a limited number of, that we are able to host. So if you can RSVP at supervisorhagman event bright dot com, so supervisorhagman event bright dot com. And once again, that's for the Christmas open house, December 2nd, from 5:30, 7:30, and we'd love to see mostly, you know, all of you back, you know. Whoever feels comfortable being out, we want you there. And that's it.
Well, great, thank you. And can you just a favor, make it easy for us? Can you send us an email to the city council? If you want, you can send it to me and I'll shoot out.
Yes, and I actually.
Go ahead.
Yes, I forgot to send it to Denise, but I'll send it tomorrow.
I did not get it as well, so in case, just, okay, right now, so feel free to send it to me, and maybe I'll send it to all, to all the council members, make sure they got it.
Will do.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, you rock up, you too. Bye.
Okay, we are now done with the public comments, and the next item will be the consent calendar item. We have several items in the consent calendar, so I'll go ahead, and this time I'll ask staff, the city attorney, well, maybe I'll start this time on my right. Anybody on my right want to pull at a consent calendar item? Anybody on my right?
I want to make sure this doesn't blow up or something, whatever it was room for. I would like to pull item number C, as in cat, 2.
C2, okay. C2 it is. Anybody else on my right?
Mr. Mayor, items C5 and C8.
C5 and C8.
Purposes of a quick question.
Okay, C5 and C8. How about on my left? Anybody want to pull?
Yes. Sorry. C4 and C5.
You want to pull C4? C5's already been pulled.
Just a quick question.
Anybody else? Carissa? No? All right. So let's just do, make this simple here. We will do the following. Let's start with item C2. So item C2 relates to the Greyhound line. So Bill, since you called us, you can lead off.
The reason I pulled this tonight, excuse me, is in looking at this, it says that the rent will be $1,800 monthly payable in advance to the city before the first day of each calendar month. If for some, one question I have is, if for some reason they don't pay that rent, do we stop them from entering the facility? It's, they're a big corporation, it's not that they won't pay their rent, but it's just a question.
They would be in default, and they have 30 days to cure the default. The city would send, they may notice that they are delinquent in their rent payment, and they would have 30 days to make the correction to that payment. They would not get an extension beyond the 30 days, because it's something that they can resolve easily within the 30 days. If they do not, then yes, they would be, their license would be revoked.
In the issue of any type of liability, I know we have all sorts of agreements in place for MetroLink and Omnitrans and RTA and Foothill Transit, eventually the Gold Line. Do we have anything in place because of the way the facility is that will indemnify us if something should happen?
Well, that is addressed in several sections. There is an insurance indemnification requirement, so yes, they do have to indemnify the city. They have to carry certain amounts of liability insurance as well. But as it relates to the public purpose uses at the transcenter, there are two separate clauses in the agreement. One relates specifically to the Gold Line or the L Line, and it stipulates that when the Gold Line construction begins at the Montclair Transcenter, it's very likely that their location will no longer be tenable, and that means that they would either have to agree to be relocated. If they chose not to be relocated, then the license agreement would be terminated. And then there are other public use purposes, if there is a taking or some other action that is imposed upon the transcenter by federal, state, local law, county requirements, or just by the separate operating agreements between the various transit-related providers that operate there, that impact their location. Again, they would have the opportunity to relocate to another location. If not, then the license would be revoked at that time.
And do we, I couldn't find it in here, perhaps it is in here, the hours of operation?
Well, their hours of operation are effectively attached as Exhibit D. They have 11 stops during the day, and they're effectively begin in the morning around 8:00 and terminate in the evening around 11:00, with four services in the morning and six services in the afternoon.
And then with the automated ticket booth, they are responsible if it doesn't work, correct?
That is going to be a staffed kiosk. It's no longer going to be an automated kiosk, so it will be staffed during the entire time that they're selling tickets on a daily basis.
That, and I'm sorry, I didn't see that in item D, even though I was reading through it. I was at a conference part of the week, so I was reading this late at night. And then the rent adjustment, I understand that that's fairly standard. At this point, that's, those are the only questions I have at this point. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, fellow colleagues, I'm very much uneasy about this going forward and us allowing Greyhound to relocate here to the city of Montclair. I called the Clermont Police Department and spoke with one of their lieutenants at length, and they gave me a seven-page report of over 200, 300 phone calls just at that location where the current Greyhound site is located. And if we allow Greyhound to come to Montclair, we're going to throw down the welcome mat to things like personal disturbance, stolen vehicles, suspicious circumstances, suspicious subjects, prostitution, welfare checks, 911 calls, GTA, grand theft auto, car break-ins, car thefts, more prostitution, more welfare checks, more medical treatment for drugs. And in doing so, the burden will lie on the feet of our police officers to respond to those calls, like it does the Clermont PD, and it'll fall on the feet of our firemen who have to answer to medical calls at this location once, come February of '22, if Greyhound comes. I don't think we should be throwing down the welcome mat for this activity to come at all. As a matter of fact, when I told the lieutenant why I was calling and that I was seeking this information, he asked what the impetus of the call was. I told him it was on our agenda today to get the ball rolling and approve for Greyhound to be relocated from Clermont to Montclair. He chuckled, said, "Good luck, have fun, get them off out of our hands." And the fact that he said that is very telling. I, for one, am not comfortable with this type of activity that will no doubt come as a result of Greyhound. We also got to bear in mind Village Ventures is going to be adjacent to this location with the tunnel from the transcenter to their property. Granted, a gate may close the walkway from 10 or 11:00 at night, but Village Ventures will no doubt, you can't control people and you can't chain them, movement happens with people. I'm sure some of these folks that are involved in these calls will no doubt make its way eventually to Village Venture and be a burden to them and a cost to them. I really doubt that, you know, when we have our personnel unions negotiate their contract, I wish they would have known about the, this coming and bearing the brunt of these burdens and these future calls. I'm not comfortable at all with them coming to Montclair, as far as I'm concerned, knowing that they have 260 to 300 calls just in a year at Greyhound. Think about that, folks. Residents of Montclair, do you want this coming to Montclair? Do you want it in the northern part of town where it's peaceful now? I mean, seriously, we got to stop and halt this. I am disappointed that this is a consent calendar item and there's no public hearing. If you truly believe that this is a good thing for the city, let's have a public hearing. Let's let the residents come and give input on this, and let's delve into this further. But I, for one, am against this, and I don't want any of this on my hands, and I'll be voting no, but I think we should look into this further. If you truly believe this is a good plan, then you should have no problem postponing this and having a public hearing. But in the meantime, this council member will not be in favor of this, and will not be passing the burden on to our personnel to answer the calls that will no doubt be thrown on our doorstep. Bear in mind also, California Institution for Men, I got confirmation of multiple police departments. When they release their inmates, they drop them off presently at the Clermont Depot for Greyhound. They will be coming to Montclair. Nevada, the state of Nevada, Clark County, Nevada, their prisoners, they give them a one-way ticket to Clermont, because it's the door to LA County. That will be happening to Montclair. You want those prisoners coming into Montclair? I sure as hell hope the answer is no. This should not be happening. They could be, they could stay there, but as far as I'm concerned, I do not want any of this in Montclair, especially when we have staffing levels that have not been met in PD and fire, and they're struggling to make calls, and they're struggling to deal with overtime. They, we need adequate staff. We have, in this last budget, we approved six new additional police officers, but we have three or four presently on staff that are looking to go elsewhere. We're not going to have a net gain in police officers, and we need them to deal with issues like this. This needs to stop. I'm absolutely opposed to this.
Well, thank you. Anybody want to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So I've given this proposal quite a lot of thought, and because we have, at our transcenter, we have a security there, and I believe that's also one of the routine routes of our police department, and it allows people to go other places. And so I really thought that was a good idea, but listening to what Councilman Lopez just said, I kind of want to have that information validated, maybe at a later date, because if that information is absolutely correct, then perhaps we should rethink this.
Thank you. So Councilman Lopez, you said you have gained information from the city of Clermont Police Department?
Yes, sir.
And who gave you this information?
One of their lieutenants.
What's his name?
I will, I can tell you that privately, sir, but I, I'll be happy to forward the email.
Well, you're in a public, you're in a public meeting with information, so I think it's important that if you receive information, you know exactly who that is, because you made some statements, and, you know, the information you have, you have not provided that to the entire city council, so we have no copies of that, nor you haven't provided a copy of that to the police chief or the city manager to also look at. And so I think it's important that if we're going to be transparent, that we all have the information till we understand what your concerns are. Obviously, the concerns of all of us, and we don't want crime to increase in this particular location, if that's the case there. So I think we should be real careful by making statements of that nature there, because this is an intermodal transportation facility, and I think part of it is our responsibility as a city to provide as much as transportation to the public. Saying that, I would like to get a copy of what you have, and I think it's important that, I'm not sure the chief has had a conversation with the Clermont Police Department. Personally, I think of the Clermont Police Department, once Greyhound leave, they'll probably be, probably won't say a whole lot about it. But nevertheless, I would like to see if there's, we get a copy of the police report that Mr. Lopez, actually, I would ask the police chief to contact the police chief of Clermont, we know who that person is, and I'd like to get, see what their reports are, if they're willing to provide the information in an official capacity. I think that's important to have. There's some statements that were made here, and I think it's important that we have the facts, we understand what the facts are. If they're, in addition to that, you made some statements about the CIM prisoners being dropped off at the Greyhound station. You also made a statement about prisoners or inmates from Nevada being dropped off in Clermont, so I'd like to see the facts of that as well, so we have a good understanding of what's being discussed here. So I have no problems continuing this item. City manager, Star, do you have anything to say?
Yes, actually, I do. I'm not going to argue that there aren't any problems at the Clermont Greyhound station or at the San Bernardino Greyhound station, but I think perhaps it's a misnomer to put that responsibility directly on Greyhound. Greyhound isn't operating a business in which they are trying to generate this kind of disturbance or unrest in the respective communities that they operate out of, and I'm sure that Greyhound would take great offense and consider it a liable statement that has been made against them, that they generate this kind of activity associated with their businesses. If you look at the locations where they're operating, you can make a determination as to why these activities may be occurring. Is it because Greyhound is operating out of a terminal? Or is it more likely because they are operating at a congregation point where there are low-cost hotels or motels, where there are fast feeder restaurants, where there are open areas for people to collect and to pursue this kind of activity? If the Clermont Police Department had an issue with it, I don't know why the Clermont Police Department hasn't been taking a more active and responsive role in dealing with a problem that has been going on at the Clermont facility for years. Is it the responsibility of Greyhound? Greyhound is just a transportation provider. They are not there to provide any other kind of service except for the picking up and the dropping off of passengers who are using their service. When you compare the Clermont station to what will occur at Montclair, Clermont is a building. It's a building on a busy street. Again, it's a building near a lot of hotels, a building near a lot of fast-feeding restaurants and other types of businesses that might engender this sort of activity. If you look at the Montclair Transit Center, all they're asking for is a shared bus bay that they will be sharing with Omnitrans. They will pull into the bus bay, they will pick up passengers, they will drop off passengers, and then they will take off. Their stopover at the transcenter will be for a matter of minutes, and they will do it approximately 11 times per day. The only other facility that they will be operating is a kiosk that will sell tickets staffed by one employee. We already have Omnitrans, Foothill Transit, Riverside Transportation Agency, as well as MetroLink operating out of the transcenter, and these transportation services do not generate this kind of problem. If this were endemic to the public transit industry, and believe me, I hear that a lot of people say that when the Gold Line gets here, we're going to be overwhelmed with homeless people, because that's all the Gold Line does, is transports homeless people. Well, it may be that homeless individuals ride the Gold Line, maybe that homeless individuals ride the Greyhound, or Omnitrans, or Foothill Transit, or Riverside Transportation Agency, but they need a form of transportation too. Everyone needs a form of transportation. Whether or not Greyhound serves as a transit agency for people of ill repute may or may not be the case, but those same individuals can ride any of the other public transit services as well. But understanding what the council member has stated, the city has been very careful in drafting the agreement that is before you. This is an original agreement, it's not a boilerplate agreement. This was drafted from scratch by myself, working very closely with Greyhound to make certain that this agreement was working for both us and for them. The reason why it had to be developed from scratch is this is the first time the Greyhound has ever entered into an agreement where they would be operating out of a multimodal transit center like this. Historically, they have operated out of depots like they are in Clermont and San Bernardino. So this is a unique opportunity for both them and for us. I did raise these issues with them, by the way, and they took great offense that I was making an effort to associate these kind of activities with them. They believe that that is not their responsibility. They recognize that there are problems that do occur around many of the depots that they operate out of, but they don't believe that that is necessarily related to the services that they do operate out of. But in any event, the agreement itself does focus on a number of issues. So for example, on the first page of the license agreement, it does specify that the use and the purpose of the transcenter is only for the use of that single bus bay that will be shared with Omnitrans. Omnitrans, by the way, fully supports the operation of Greyhound and willingness to share a bus bay with them. San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, as well as Caltrans, has endorsed moving forward with the agreement with Greyhound. Greyhound passengers will share in the common areas, including restaurant, restrooms, and benches, just like any of the other users of the transit facility for whether, whatever transit unit that they are operating, or that they are going to be using. On the next page of the agreement, page 2, it specifies that all provisions of this license shall remain the same during any extension options. So the agreement does provide that there are two options for extension of the agreement, and each of the provisions in this agreement, and as I get to them, you'll understand how they provide a protection to the city, each of these terms will continue into future agreements. So when you look down onto the next page, use of premises, it defines that the tenant shall use the premises only for its business operations and any other activities reasonably related thereto, and for any other lawful purposes. Obviously, the purposes that were described by the council member would not be lawful purposes. That would be in default of the agreement and would give the city the opportunity to revoke the license should any unlawful purposes occur. It also says, under use of premises, that tenants licensed to use premises shall not deny, prevent, interfere with, or otherwise abrogate the landlord's use of the transcenter for any purpose other than as transit services. That means that if any of these other types of activities were to occur at the transcenter, there would also be immediate grounds for revocation of the license agreement. And then under D, under six representations, warranties, and covenants of title, it stipulates that the tenant's use of the premises may be subject to termination, interruption, or relocation due to the planned extension of the Los Angeles Metropolitan Transportation Authority L Line. That means that, obviously, when the Gold Line arrives, and that may be as early as 2027 at this point in time, should we be successful in obtaining the necessary funding. If the city has determined that we are not happy with Greyhound services... If the city has determined that we are not happy with Greyhound services, we can terminate the agreement just on that basis alone. Then under section seven, quiet enjoyment, it says that except as otherwise provided for in this section and section 16 and 16 herein, landlord covenants and agrees that so long as tenant observes and performs all of the agreements and covenants required of it hereunder, and otherwise is in full compliance with federal, state and local laws and ordinances, including in association with tenant's business operations at the premises, those related to the, to the maintenance of peace and order, and the prohibition of illegal activities either by the tenant or tenant's employees, agents or clientele, then the city has the right to revoke the license. So once again, if any of these activities were to occur, that would immediately be grounds for the city to revoke the license. Then on page six of the agreement, under the public's purpose, it talks about the taking, which I addressed earlier. If there's any requirement that the city needs to repurpose any of the transcenter that would affect the operations of Greyhound, then the city has the right to revoke the license agreement. Then under section 17, under defaults, this addresses the default components related to the license operations. So under two of the defaults, the failure by tenant to observe or perform any of the covenants, conditions or provisions of this license to be observed or performed by tenant, other than those described in so, so, so forth, where the failure continues for a period of 30 days after tenant receives notice there from landlord, then the city has the right to revoke the license agreement. Now, they do have 30 days to cure. That means that if there are any of these illegal activities that are operating at the transcenter as a result of Greyhound's operations, they have, if the city chooses to give them that 30 days to cure, they have 30 days to eliminate the problem. If they are unsuccessful, then the city has the right to revoke the license at that point in time. So those are pretty conclusive components in the agreement that give full authority to the city to revoke the license, the operating license of Greyhound should any of these activities occur. Again, I want to emphasize that I was aware that these concerns were out there by members of the council, as perhaps by some members of the public. And in looking at the issues, I think there are distinctive operating parameters related in comparison to the transcenter and the Claremont terminal, the depot, that there are distinctive operating differences that will not allow that sort of activity to transition to the Montclair Transcenter. In addition to that, and having a conversation with the chief of police, he's well aware of the issues that have occurred in Claremont around the depot. And the Montclair Police Department has a highly regarded reputation as not tolerating that sort of activity in Montclair. Many members of the council will be aware, are well aware of problems that we've had in this city historically on Mission and Holt Boulevard. That problem no longer is a prevalent problem in Montclair. It may still be in other surrounding cities, but it certainly isn't in Montclair. And that's a direct result of the activities of the Montclair Police Department in suppressing that sort of activity. And I believe that the department is well positioned to make certain that that activity that may be around the depot in Claremont will not carry over to Montclair Transcenter. But again, I want to emphasize that the differences in the environments at the Montclair Transcenter, where all they have is a single bus bay to pull in, load passengers and allow passengers to disembark and then depart immediately and not return until their next stop, will not encourage or lend itself to the sort of the activities that you're seeing in Claremont.
Thank you. Councilmember Protenru.
Yes. Excuse me. The statistics that were brought forward tonight about the Claremont site, is there a way, and I, maybe our chief can look at this, the grand theft, whether it's directly related to the bus station or whether it's related to perhaps a motel that's over there? I know Indian Hill is a major street, and the bus station sits right on Indian Hill, about a block and a half south of I-10. So there's a direct connection to I-10 both east and west, which certainly anything near a freeway, you tend to have more grand theft auto. And I'm wondering if there's a way we can work or find out from Claremont, what percentage of that is directly related to the bus station and what is related to the, just the environment in that area? I know if you look at shopping malls in the region that have close access to the I-10 or the 210, you tend to see an increase in grand theft of automobiles. But when you meet with them, do you know if they would have a way to aggregate that information out?
Way up to the podium, I did leave one item out, and that is that I'm sure many of you in the council are already aware that CIM, or rather, the Chino Men's Colony, already brings inmates up to the Montclair Transcenter on a weekly basis and deposits them, or drops them off at the transcenter. The officers that do that are supposed to stay until each of those individuals boards other forms of transportation to parts. I myself have sat there and observed, that's not what they do. They simply drop them off and let them fend for themselves. But to my knowledge, there hasn't been any associated crimes that we can directly pinpoint to any great degree, or even if all, for all I know, to the inmates who are dropped off. So that all, activity already occurs directly at the Montclair Transcenter, as far as prisoners or inmates being dropped off, or inmates that are no longer inmates, what do you call them?
When they get released from Men's Central Prison down in Chino, they do transport them here. And they've been doing that for well over a decade. So that's been going on for a long time. And as City Manager Starr had said, there have been crimes, but nothing of major significant issues. The biggest issue is not having the guards necessarily comply with their directions, which is to remain there until they get on the bus and leave the location. And, and we've addressed that. The police department's done a very good job at staying on top of issues up there, particularly long, people staying up there long-term, various other issues. We stay up there as much as we possibly can to try to curb and prevent, you know, criminal activity that does occur up there. But to answer your question about talking with Claremont and trying to delve into whether or not the crimes are specific to Greyhound, that's much harder to do, but I certainly can try to do something with Claremont and talk to them to see if, if it is a possibility to try to pair out necessarily what crimes occurred and are quasi-related to Greyhound, or whether or not they happen to be the person reporting it or calling it, or whether or not any particular crime that was going on in that area just kind of happened upon that particular area. City Manager Starr is correct when he talks about the hotel issues. There are some low-cost hotel issues there, one being on the northern side of the 10 freeway. There is a lot of activity there. I am familiar with that area, I do frequent that area myself. I go through that way for various meetings and occasionally to eat over in that particular area. So I have seen the activities that do occur over there. Whether or not they're actually connected to Greyhound, I have no absolute knowledge on whether or not that has been a big issue. It has never really come up for me in any conversations that I've had in the West End Chiefs meetings or anything of that nature. And unfortunately, the, the new chief, and I, his name's escaping me right now, of Claremont, did not show up at, excuse me? Did not show up at today's West End Chiefs meeting, so I didn't happen to have an opportunity to have a conversation with him about anything that was going on up there. So if that answers your question as best as I possibly can.
It gives me some information. I know that there are, if I'm correct, one, two, probably three motels in that general region. And then if I'm right, I think there's a liquor store or something over in that area.
There is a lot of activity over there. There's an In-N-Out down the street, I believe Greyhound is on the corner of American and Indian Hill. And then their parking lot, I, I'm trying to visualize it, I think might be connected to some of the other businesses there. There are a lot of restaurants there.
Starbucks there shares the same parking lot with the Denny's, and it's really backed up.
Yes, and where Denny's is, there's also a hotel right there, so there, there is a multitude.
North of the 10, there's two, one on the east, I think, and one on the west. I'm trying to, I drove it the other day, and I was trying to visualize it.
Yeah, there, there is a lot of activity there, there's the norms that's there too.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, several comments and then a couple of questions. First of all, the, the information that I gather as a result of my own independent research regarding items on the agenda, I, I, I choose to do my homework and go get additional information on my own. What the other four of you choose to do, that's for neither me to say whether or not it's good or bad. I'm not here to cast aspersions on anything that you, you guys do with respect to getting your own background information. This is how I get mine with respect to this issue. Regarding this spreadsheet, all the calls originate out of 888 South Indian Hill Greyhound. So I'm not specifically addressing the issues about the hotels in the area or whatnot. I am specifically touching upon the location at the Greyhound. And I do have the report. I can print this out, give it to the city clerk, and she can hand it to you guys in your guys' boxes.
No, I will suggest that you get that, the report to this police chief. Because my motion's going to be tonight, we're going to continue the item, and I'm going to have the police chief review the report. And he's also going to contact the police chief in Claremont, discuss with him, and then come back with a better information based on what your allegations are. And I think it's, it's important to get the facts, and that's what I'm going to recommend tonight.
Further, we do have with respect to this location, we presently have two fast food establishments within walking distance from the transcenter, and that is Taco Bell and Kane's Chicken, right there on Central and Ricton. I know that the officer had told me a problem for them was the 7-Eleven on the Pomona side of Indian Hill in San Bernardino, where some of the folks using the Greyhound would utilize the 7-Eleven for various drinks and beverages of certain kind and then show up at the Greyhound to board a bus. I, I would still argue that irrespective of the safeguards that the city manager laid out in the contract, I still will ascertain and assert that they are a drain on our police personnel and our fire personnel, because even though we may have some teeth in language, it does nothing to prevent those circumstances and the instances that are well documented by Claremont PD from existing and happening in Montclair. None of us up here, not even the chief, the city manager, or us five can guarantee that any of these circumstances on the police call log will not happen within our city border. It just does not put me at ease. I think the proof for me is in the call log. They even offered to give me data going back to 1990, 31 years they've been having a problem with this site. And this is, a lot of this here is also 2020, during COVID, when ridership was down, and they're still getting over 200 calls. Why take the risk of us opening up the welcome, or laying down the welcome mat to have more inmates that are slated for Claremont to now come to Montclair? I think we would have double, if we're already getting some from CIM, we don't need Claremont share. Question though, and either the chief or city manager alluded to this, but the question I have, I have two questions. One is about the electric scooters in here as well, it's a side, a tangent. This one though, did staff in negotiating and drafting up this contract seek out Claremont PDs or their city's input on their problems and the issue? If you knew that they were, the concerns existed, if you knew that there was talk about it on the street, if you knew about there being concerns and reservations, did you seek out Claremont in any way?
I spoke with the former city manager of Claremont, the one that precedes the one that is there now. So this process started early in the year, and I had that conversation. We both recognize that, yes, there are issues there, but in discussing the issues, it was difficult to identify that it was Greyhound that was responsible.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm very uncomfortable about this, even if we do postpone it, which is what I was requesting as well. There'd have to be a lot of assurances and guarantees to assuage me to even come on board. But as of now, I, I have a bad taste in my mouth about this, I'm not comfortable voting for it. But I, and again, we got to bear in mind future development that's going to be happening there, and restaurants that will be coming in there in our developments, like Village Ventures Development. And I do not want the unintended consequence of certain clientele from this particular entity in a radius of a mile within this depot affecting businesses and residents in the area. There's no guarantee that won't happen, irregardless of the benefits that many will preach about this. There's no guarantee that the safety of those regarding these instances will not be preventable in the city of Montclair.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I would second your motion to continue this, our next meeting is December 20th. But I do have a question, and I think I know the answer, but I just want to hear it from City Manager Starr or the chief. This agreement with Greyhound is just Greyhound, it's not all other entities, it's not the Las Vegas prisons, it's just Greyhound. Do, does Greyhound transport prisons from Las Vegas, or is that the prison people doing that? That's, that's separate from this, correct?
Greyhound transports commercial passengers, so whoever pays them to transport commercial passengers. I suppose if Chino Men's Institute paid them to transport prisoners, I suppose that they would. But I don't think that they have necessarily collective agreements, but I'm not privy to their business operations. So if you look at the schedule of locations where they pick up and drop off passengers from, and then they would come to Montclair, it wouldn't suggest to me that they're going to locations to pick up inmates and to bring them here. I think they're just taking people who are bound to Las Vegas or other desert communities or other parts of Southern California as they operate out of this particular location.
Thank you. The other comment I had is, I'm, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for counting out all of the ways that this, this contract can be terminated. I look forward to hearing the, the further investigation that's done, because even if this goes into effect, it doesn't go into effect until February. So if we determine that, that we believe that there's going to be a challenge after the investigation is done, then we can just not do it, because we don't have to do it until February.
Well, I believe at this point, the agreement will be extended out to have a start date probably in March or April, simply because they have to have lead time to order the kiosk. They won't order the kiosk until the agreement is in hand, and then they have to give notice of termination of their lease with the facility in Claremont.
That's even better, that gives us more time for research. So as Mayor Dutre said, he wanted to move this into our next meeting, and I will second that.
Let me refocus the motion here. So, and I, you know, I was, I'm not very excited about this project as well, but I also have to be, I have to realize that this is an intermodal transportation facility we have in Montclair, and we just can't judge that we don't, we want this, we don't want that. That's the whole purpose why we had the Montclair Transit Center that was, that was built in the first place, is provide transit riders options to go from one destination to another destination, if that's a train, that's a bus, or that's a private bus. And, you know, this transit center is not just Montclair, it is the state of California, owns the parking lot. We have Samuel Public, Samuel County Transportation Authority, that is owner there. We have partners there, obviously MetroLink, we have Omnitrans, we have Foothill Transit. And so there, it's a very busy transit station. And so as a city, we do have a responsibility to ensure that we live up to that spirit there. Saying that, we also have to make sure that we don't have any entity that comes in here that, that generates high volume of calls to service. Obviously, we don't want that, and if, you know, if, if that's going to be the case, then I'm not going to support this. Or if this, this is approved, and we find out there is a high cause for service and crime, then yes, we need to move forward and to declare a default and get out of this agreement, if that's the case. But I'm not going to judge Greyhound in that fashion, I've done my own research. Yeah, I've seen some other facilities, the one in San Bernardino, based on Yelp, you go on Yelp, you hear, you'll see, we've seen the comments on Yelp, and there are a lot of bad comments about the Samuel Station on Yelp, and I think part of that's because of its location and in San Bernardino and, and just the transit or the, the activity that's occurring there. I haven't, when I go on Yelp for the Claremont Station, I don't see any really negative comments of that location there. But saying that, what I'd like to do is, Mr. Lopez, if he doesn't mind, he can provide his, this, this report he got from the lieutenant in the city of Claremont, and if he can provide a copy of that to the city manager and the police chief, and I want to give them an opportunity to look at it. And I'm also asking that the city police chief contact the police chief in Claremont in kind of a discussion about this report and, and the conditions that are happening there. happening there, including that area there. But more importantly, is this directly related to Greyhound, or is this just because of the area there, and this is why this report got generated? I don't know. And of course, again, I'd like to see a copy of that report, too, and go through myself to make sure I understand that. So, the motion is to continue this item. I'll let staff decide when to bring it, bring it back, if it's going to be there next meeting in December, or, or a meeting early next year, and at the same time, have staff review the information. Mr. Lopez has, the police chief will contact, the police chief of Claremont should get that, and then bring that information back to us, and we can make a determination. That's my motion, and I believe Councilman Johnson second the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Real quick question. Regarding, this is section five of the contract, real quickly, regarding electric scooter. When it states that the transcenter is a multimodal transit center, then it lists the various forms of transportation that the transcenter is to engage in, electric scooters. Now, I was told that that was to include what is commonly called by the younger generation on the street, birds. Is that the case? I bring that up because when, there was about, two years ago, could have been even longer, there were birds that popped up on Moreno Street, where folks were just dumping them, which is what they do when they're done using them.
Yeah.
And residents on Facebook blew it up, were mad. So I want to get some type of assurance that we're not having those type of birds in the city at this particular location.
Well, there was a service that had dropped off a number of scooters here a couple of years ago. I don't believe it was Bird, I believe it was another company that has since gone out of business. Doesn't mean that Bird did not use the same business format that you alluded to several years ago, that's how they all did it, but the industry has changed quite a bit. But to specifically answer your question, there are no e-scooters that are in service in the city of Montclair right now. Doesn't mean that they won't be here. It is the type of a service that is very popular in urban areas, and we have been contacted by Bird to reengage as to whether or not it would be a possibility to bring the scooters into the city. It's a very different format now. They don't just drop them off like that now, they hire a area manager who would be responsible exclusively for the area in which the birds are operating. The new devices all have new technology on them that provides an indication to the area manager when they are not in their proper location, and that area manager is then responsible for retrieving the birds. So, for example, if the bird is just left on its side, as opposed to standing up, it has a geopolitical displacement design inside of it that allows it to send out a signal to the area manager, who will then come out and pick up the bird, recharge it, and put it back in its proper location. They also have a ability to program them with a mapping system. So, for example, if you only want them used in an exclusive area of town, then the birds can only operate in that area. Once you take them off of the street grid in which they're allowed to operate, the wheels lock, and they cannot be transported, or they cannot be rid, road any further than that. You can also establish speed limits on them. So on certain streets, if you only want them to travel 10 miles an hour, then they automatically will adjust their speed down to 10 miles an hour. They're not allowed to operate on streets that have 35 mile per hour or higher speed limits, so that helps to eliminate that sort of a conflict at higher speeds. They do have a top speed of, I believe, around 20 miles per hour, but I believe that they are set to operate no, I believe they told us no higher than 15 miles per hour, if I recall correctly. So, the whole business concept now is to recognize the problems that municipal agencies have had in the past with them, and in order to rectify that reputation that they've obtained as related to some of the issues that you just discussed, Councilmember Lopez, they have completely redesigned their format. So, we're only in discussion with them right now. They want to be located in Montclair, Claremont, and obviously, if Claremont or Ontario would be willing to take them onboard, they only want to be in those jurisdictions that have a high transit, public transit use, because this sort of a device provides that extra opportunity to go from, from the transit center to the direct door that they want to try and reach to. But again, the whole design of the program now is to address the problems that you have addressed, and certainly, we would make certain that when we bring this to the council, if it even goes that far, that we would make certain that all these issues are addressed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor to continue this item, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to just go ahead and do the electronic vote.
Okay, I'm sending it out just as C2, so.
Okay, this is for E2.
C2.
I think Carissa's, is her popped up as well?
Oh, sorry, I didn't notice that she had left. Let me redo that, then.
Everybody's voting? Everybody's got theirs? Okay, that's adopted 4-0 with Councilmember Martinez absent.
Move.
Okay.
To continue the item.
So, continue the item. And C4, who pulled C4? Go ahead. C4.
Mr. Mayor, I pulled 4 and 5. I have one simple little question.
All right, go ahead, C4 and C5, your questions.
I believe it's a question for Chief Avos. I think this is a fabulous idea, that we have professionals who are updating our systems and our policies, as long, as well as our daily training bulletins for both police and fire. But my question is, when those bulletins are received, how, how do we know, is there an accountability for the officers or the firefighters? Do they have to sign off that they received it, or read it, or, you know, what would happen if they, you know, whatever time later said, "Oh, nobody told me, I didn't know"? Do we have some proof that they actually read those documents?
Yes. The manager that, that controls the program, it'll probably be one of the battalion chiefs. I believe it's going to be Ryan Derek that's going to be managing it, and he'll work in conjunction with Lexipol. So when those daily training bulletins come out, they will then ensure that they're being completed and they're being signed off, and they are tracked monthly, so we can see who's doing them and who's not doing them, and how often they're doing them, to ensure that they are done monthly. And just so you know, the purpose of that is just to ensure that the employees understand and are knowing how to apply the policy, which is why we have those daily training bulletins.
Excellent. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. And then C5?
I actually pulled that one as well.
Go ahead.
And it relates to what the chief had just stated. I had a little bad taste in my mouth regarding a line in a paragraph on the staff report regarding fire, under the background section, second paragraph, "Fire personnel periodically update the fire department's current policy and procedures manual, but the department does not have an effective delivery platform to ensure," et cetera, et cetera. I do know firsthand that the police chief just alluded to Chief Derek, Battalion Chief Derek, being charged with updating the manuals, or at least responsible for gathering input on those. At least five members of our active fire department personnel serve on an internal committee that looks at policies and procedures regarding their own department. They have made recommendations, and they've met for several weeks, if not months, and handed over a policy manual to Chief Derek. I don't know what has happened beyond that, but I do know that they have done so, and given great time, time on their own without pay, and research in updating their manuals and doing their due diligence. I do not want it to think, because the impression I got from this staff report was that fire did not, didn't do anything. And, and I want them, want it to be clear that they do a great deal of work with respect to their policy manuals. If indeed this only helps and aids them, and addresses some deficiencies, by all means, let's move forward, but I just wanted to make that general statement.
And who are the five?
Excuse me?
They have a, they have an internal committee of, of their own members that look at policy manuals.
Okay.
I know one member of that committee is no longer.
Who are the five, who are the five members?
Well, one's no longer an employee of this city.
Okay.
Shared that with me. So, that, that is news to me, who they have meeting together to talk about that. I do know that Ryan was working on the policy. I can only conclude, maybe it was an informal committee, that he was seeking out to get input, and there was nothing meant to be negative in that agenda report. Actually, I had tasked Deputy Chief Dave Poehl to talk with Ryan about putting together the agenda to explain the rationale for moving to the Lexipol program, and fortunately, I have a very zealous aide that works for me, Marcy Butler, who took it upon herself to, to put together the agenda report for them on their behalf. So, she, she did a great job at putting that together, and what she did was is basically talk about the two different policy manuals that they've had for a fairly long time. They actually have one that they've been doing for, as long as I can, I can think back that the fire department's been in existence, they've actually been updating their own policy manual, but they also have one with Lexipol as well, that was adopted in 2016, that started and was born out of the JPA that was apart with Upland. And when that JPA fell apart, the whole policy manual thing kind of fell apart, and nothing was really brought together since that particular period in time to implement up-to-date policies and best practices and procedures. And so there was discussion between myself, Deputy Chief Dave Poehl, and then he with Ryan about looking at going towards Lexipol, and it was just one of my staff members that does a great job, that was able to put that together on their behalf. And so if they were doing something informally, where they were talking about updating policies, this is just another step to help them get where they need to go, to be a lot easier, and to be a part of what's happening in the industry as far as best practices, and make sure that we're in compliance with all the laws as well. So, it's a good thing that's moving forward. I appreciate all the work that they've been doing, and I'm certain that they'll probably still continue to work together informally to ensure that we're adopting the policies that we need in the workplace.
Okay. I think the next one we have here is C8. Who pulled C8?
I did, Mr. Mayor. Quick question. First line of the background paragraph, "The police department submitted a grant application to Cal OES for $300,000. What is the status of that grant?"
We have the money.
Okay. That's, that's what I want, because I didn't see that we got a confirmation that we did get it in the report. That's all I asked.
Yes.
Now that we have it, that's great. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So, let's have a approval of the remainder of the consent calendar. C2 is already approved, so one, someone will make a motion for the approval of the women.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Is there a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
I'm hearing mumbling here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I second.
Johnson second. And let's do electronic vote. I assume it's already here.
Sorry, I have to redo that. For some reason, it didn't use the previous attendance. It should have.
Now we're down to communications. I want to start with the Human Services Department, and Marcia Richter, are you ready?
Yes.
Good.
All right, the holidays are upon us, and I wanted to update you about some upcoming and exciting activities and events coming to Montclair. Donation bins, you may have noticed, for the holiday toy and food basket program were placed out separate locations today around Montclair, including City Hall, Senior Center, Recreation Center, Fire Station 1, and the Police Department. Donations will be accepted until Thursday, December 9. Many thanks to all who donate, and if you have a large donation, or need a pickup, or would like to make a monetary donation, please contact me after the meeting. And, second item, I want to welcome everyone to attend the Holly Jolly Holiday Event that will be held on Thursday, December 2, from 6:00 p.m. until 8:30 p.m. in Almahoffman Park, or the Shark Park. The evening will include the tree lighting and complimentary socially-distanced photos with Santa and Mrs. Claus. The event will also feature entertainment, refreshments while supplies last, and an area where children can write letters to Santa. Gift lights in memory or in honor of a loved one will be available for purchase as well, so we hope all of you can attend. The police and fire departments will be holding food and toy drives at Costco to support our holiday toy and food basket programs. Drives will be held at the Montclair Costco on Friday, December 3, and the 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and we will have a suggested list of needed items available the day of the event to help make your shopping easier. The Community Activities Commission invites you to submit your entry for the Holiday Home Decoration Contest. Entry applications are available on the city website and are due by Friday, December 3, at 6:00 p.m. Winners will be announced at an upcoming city council meeting. I'm happy to also let you know that dashing through Montclair will take place on Saturday, December 4. Led by the police department, Santa, Mrs. Claus, and his team of elves will dash through Montclair starting at 2:00 p.m. and ending at 6:00 p.m., beginning and ending at the Montclair Police Department. This year, Santa and Mrs. Claus will be social distancing and will be, will not be making any stops along the route. But if you'd like to see Santa's route this year, please visit the city's website after November 22. Thank you to everyone who supports our community holiday events and activities. And unfortunately, it does look like that Thursday event conflicts with Supervisor Hagman's event.
Yeah, we'll make it work.
Yes.
We'll make it work.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Are there no Santa pictures this year?
Yes.
There is? Okay. No, I didn't hear that. I was writing notes, and I wrote, kids with, kids write letters, but I wasn't sure about the pictures.
They'll be out of distance this year. They won't be on sight.
Complimentary socially-distanced photos with Santa and Mrs. Claus.
Yeah. Thank you. The next communication is from the police department, and Chief Avos will give us a update on the Flock ALPR cameras.
I guess I could have just.
Did I say correctly, Flock?
Yes, it is Flock, and.
Sound like the duck business.
Well, I guess it was done probably purposeful, because the camera program that they put out, they have named the Falcon, and the more-than-shot technology that, that's coming to fruition this coming year is named the Raven. So apparently, they like the bird terms, but, you know, it works. So, at last week's workshop, there was a little insight as to the program that we've been working on, and I know many of you have had conversations with me in the past and talked about camera systems in the community, ALPR systems and things of that nature. So, we've always been wanting to do that. That's been a passion of mine, to try to put something out there that can help prevent and detect crime and reduce crime overall. We've looked at various mechanisms to try to employ ALPR technology and other surveillance cameras and things like that of that nature. In the past, we had ALPR cameras on our patrol cars, which had three to four cameras. We had four cars at one time, and then we were down to three cars. And over time, the technology changed with the camera systems. They're very expensive to employ. We've had software issues over the past, and in the very, fairly recent past, that particular system was just no longer serviceable, so even though we had the cameras on some of our cars, they weren't really functioning. We were using the database system that was available to us at the time, but that eventually ended its service life and just became no longer viable. So in the recent past, we did partner with another company, and that agenda report did go through quite a while ago. That was for the Vigilant system. We still currently use that database for investigative purposes. It is automated license plate reader data only, but it is available from other commercial sources, so it is a viable database for us to continue to use. The problem is, is we don't have any ALPR cameras in our community, and we wanted to move in that direction. We did look at Vigilant quite a while ago. Part of the problem with moving in that direction with that particular company is the technology that they employed and the camera system that they used was going to cause us to expend between $300,000 and $500,000 to basically put cameras at four different intersections, and then it would also require additional infrastructure improvements, which the city is working on, and that's the fiber optic going to the intersections and things like that. But it was just going to be much farther down the road, it was going to be more costly. And then we came across this company that other cities have been using, and that's Flock. The company was born in 2017, when the founder himself was the victim of a crime, and when he provided information to his local police department, which was in Atlanta, he realized that there wasn't much the police department could go on, because they didn't have any information that they could follow up on beyond just a simple description of maybe a, a particular vehicle that was involved. Recognizing that 70% of crimes involve vehicles, the founder worked towards developing this program. program, and hence we have this Flock camera system. And it's very different than the other systems that we had looked at in the past. And what's the biggest difference about this is it's not only an ALPR camera system, it actually captures additional information beyond just the license plate. It actually captures characteristics of the vehicle. It also does the same thing with bicyclists as well as people. The camera system is activated based off of motion. It's motion-based off of 75 feet, so anything within 75 feet of the camera's view, it will start taking photographs. It does not take actually surveillance camera recordings. It takes photographs. It is designed to work as an ALPR, but it does things more. They do, they call it their fingerprint, let me see if I can get it here, fingerprint technology. They call it obtaining objective evidence that police need to solve the crime. And basically, what it is, is it captures things like the make, the model of the vehicle, the color of the vehicle, specific characteristics such as roof racks, stickers in the windows, damage to the vehicles, and things of that nature. And it allows law enforcement to be able to search their database for those specific things. So most people know that when some criminals go out and commit a crime, they find a way to try to not be detected, and so they cover up their license plate. Well, a system like this will still capture the fingerprint, vehicle fingerprint technology. It'll capture those specific characteristics, and we can search the database for that. The other ALPR systems, they don't have a database that functions like that. This particular system does. And so it's kind of taken the industry by storm. Where they started, most of their work was in foundation areas, not necessarily with law enforcement. They were marketed towards places like condominium facilities. And interesting note that I recently learned is Cimarron Oaks in our city is actually using this technology right now. They are using the Flock camera system. And if you're not familiar with where Cimarron Oaks is, it's the condominium complex that is on Mona Vista directly across the street from Chili's. It's on the west side of the street. So they are already using that. And the hope that they had had was to get these particular camera systems into these communities so that they could help prevent and detect crimes in those particular areas and provide the intelligence to law enforcement. So once they realized that that was becoming a benefit for them, they transitioned into the law enforcement arena. And so law enforcement has been putting these types of systems throughout the community. The system is a far cheaper mechanism to get involved in. It costs $2,500 a year for a camera. The police department is looking at putting 40 cameras in the community. We had our city and site meeting today with the company to look at where would they look at putting the cameras and what would that really look like. And the meeting went very well. The initial start of the program will cost us about $110,000, which I intend to fund with other revenue sources that have come into the police department. And then the remaining balance of the second year for the lease term would end up becoming another $100,000. That would be funded in the general fund. I've had some conversation with City Manager Starr about it. It's a great program that's doing very well in other communities. And I wanted to just touch bases with you on the other communities that have cameras with this company already. Upland has eight cameras. Ontario has 80 cameras right now, and they're looking at adding 50 more. The Redlands City has 25 cameras. Riverside County has well over 100, and they're adding more. LASD has a camera program that's pending right now with this company. And Pomona also has cameras. And just to give you a little insight on the benefit, the local police department's been dealing, we've been dealing with a particular rash of crimes involving people driving a vehicle throughout the community. We recently identified that particular vehicle. And I'm, because of the nature of the investigation, I'm not getting into specifics of it. But I want to tell you that the vehicle was identified by the Flock cameras with the vehicle going into Pomona. And then we were able to obtain the license plate from the Flock camera system. We used it for our search in the database with the Vigilant system. And we've identified locations where that vehicle is commonly at, and we're currently looking at identifying those suspects involved in crimes in the city of Montclair. So even though we haven't had the cameras in our system yet, we already have been able to get access to it, and it's already been proving to be beneficial for us. So my hope is that when the agenda report comes through to you, probably on the December 20 meeting, if you have more questions, then we can ask. I can answer them as best as I can. But my hope is that you will approve this project, and we will look like having about 40 cameras throughout the community. And I believe it's going to be a beneficial endeavor for us. If you look at it from the perspective of, you know, we hope that when a cop's out on patrol, he's there to witness a crime and capture the individuals or gain intelligence information that we can certainly investigate at a later time. This is like putting 40 more cops throughout your community. So if you look at it from that perspective, it kind of is a no-brainer to me. So hopefully, you guys will approve that, and we'll see a marketed reduction in crime over a period of time. So if I can answer any questions, I'll try to answer any questions.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for that report. I do have a couple of questions. Do you have a sense, I know we haven't, don't even have it yet, so you probably don't know for sure, but do you have a sense of where those cameras are going to be? Will some of them be at the trans center? And if something happens at a certain place, whether it's the trans center or someplace else? So somebody wearing, for example, a red shirt and a blue hat does something at the trans center, and then they go down Central Avenue to wherever they're going. Can you, this system will be able to track them from spot to spot to spot?
Yes. And I don't specifically know all the locations, so forgive me 40 locations as, well, 40 cameras. So it's not 40 locations. It's 40 cameras. So a particular intersection could have four cameras. They don't, won't typically have more than that, but they could depending on the width of the street. But I can't remember all the locations. I don't think they specifically talked about putting them up at the trans center right now because we looked at our statistical information, and we've had talks with the company about what was best based on their experience. These cameras right now are in 1,200-plus cities across the nation right now. So we've looked to them for their expertise as to tell us where you think it would be best based on what we know and what you know as far as what would be the best bang for our buck right now and how that could help us reduce crime. So that's kind of where we've been looking at it from this point. Lieutenant Ventura is the lieutenant that's tasked with running this program. He's doing a fantastic job with it right now. So I'm kind of letting him and the company kind of design where those things need to go. One of the great things about this is it only costs $250 to install the camera. So that's where the $110,000 comes into play. It's $10,000 for installation of the 40 cameras throughout our community. If we're looking at the data and we're determining, hey, this camera's really not serving a great purpose for us right now. It's $150 to move it to another location. So once it's installed, if we decide, you know, we're not getting a lot of information in this particular area, we think it might be better suited in another location, we can move the camera. And if we find somewhere through the two-year lease that this is just, this has been the best thing that we've ever done in our community as far as cameras, and we want to add more, we could look at even adding more. Like, I didn't talk about it too much, about the shot detection technology, but that is something that they're trying to incorporate into it. I know when I talk about that, that probably really excites people because we start thinking about the Fourth of July. So would it be a benefit to us? Probably. But please don't get your hopes up 100% when it comes to that because how this system works is we have a crime, somebody reports to us, hey, there was a shooting, or a gray, dark gray Honda Civic was driving by, and they threw a firework, you know, in the street. You know, I need somebody to tell us that information. I saw, you know, somebody driving in a dark gray Honda at this time at this location. Then we check our system, and we find that information, and then it provides us the investigative leads to follow up on. Whereas before that, we would just have the witness that said it was a dark gray Honda and the person threw out a firework. So it can be a benefit. It can help us. I do believe it will have some benefits when it comes to the shot detection technology. But, you know, it's not 100%. You know, we can't prevent every crime, nor are we always able to solve every crime. So, but we will do our best with it. I think this is something that's going to be good for our community. It's something I've wanted to do for a long time, and this just happens to be the right time, the right place for us to be able to get on board and start making a difference.
Perfect. I have one more question. And this is a technical question that you probably won't be able to answer off the top of your head, but maybe when it's in a report, we can talk about it. Does, my question is, does the Flock system connect easily to other systems in general? And in particular, what I'm asking about is, you may recall at our last meeting, we talked about another restroom at the trans center, and it has cameras above the doors to that restroom when you're entering or exiting. And I'm wondering if that system can connect to those cameras. But you could tell us later, but I'm just interested to know.
Well, it won't connect to those cameras, but I guess maybe I'm not understanding what you're trying to get at. I mean, if we have cameras there, obviously, they can be monitored. And there is other technology that can be incorporated with other surveillance camera systems that does use artificial intelligence to assist law enforcement with doing deeper and easier investigations with that type of stuff. It won't connect to Flock. Flock is its own entity and its own system. It will be connected directly to the police department. And anytime a vehicle that does drive through an area that's captured on Flock, and then, for instance, if it's a stolen vehicle, it'll actually alert my dispatcher right then that there's a stolen vehicle at this location at this time. This is what it is. This is the direction it's going. So I do fear that we're going to get a lot of those types of hits, and we probably won't be able to manage them all. But we will obviously do the best we can with it, and it is something that we can follow up on at a later time. But when you add 40 ALPR cameras into your community, I'm probably going to get a lot of hits on stolen vehicles driving through the community. But they will alert our dispatcher at the moment that they go through. As far as some of the technology, I did leave out a little bit of that, and let me just jump back. It is solar-powered. It can be powered by regular electricity, 120 volts. But primarily, we're looking at putting solar-powered out there because it provides us the most versatility of being able to place the cameras. So they will have solar panels on them. When the solar is not working properly, the batteries will operate the cameras for up to two days. So they will last, there's plenty of power for the system to operate. The cameras only store the information that it captures for a brief period of time, and then it's through cellular upload. So it's not through fiber-optic infrastructure, you know, connection. It's cellular-uploaded, and it's secure, and it's encrypted, and it's secure on a cloud-based database. The information is only retained for 30 days unless you choose that you want to retain it longer. But the 30-day retention is included in the cost of the camera. Any technology changes in the camera, or if there's newer camera designs that come out, they're automatically upgraded in our lease at no cost. It's all included.
Excellent. I'm excited. I'm looking forward to hearing it.
I'm very excited, too. It's something that we've wanted for a while. It's something that I've wanted. I think it will make a difference in our community. And I know there are some advocates out there that don't like the ALPR-type thing. Sometimes they think of a Big Brother-type thing. And for me, this is about preventing and detecting crime. You know, if, you know, it doesn't matter to me if the conversation gets out to the community and to the criminal world that, hey, Montclair has cameras. Well, you can commit your crime somewhere else. Don't come here.
I like it. Well, Chief, thank you. We talked about this, too, and I appreciate your staff and yourself working on this and hopefully make a reality here pretty soon. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Now we have city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items, and they're on the agenda there. Next, ask the council to meet in closed session. One regarding pending litigation in the Sully Miller versus Montclair, and the other regarding one potential case. That's it.
Thank you very much, city manager.
No items.
Myself. As may know, Montclair High School football team won their game last week against San Gabriel High School. That was the quarterfinals in CIF in their Division 13 or 14. And this coming Friday at Montclair High School, Montclair High School will play semifinal game against South Pasadena. And I'm going to ask that on this Friday here in the city of Montclair, we declare this as Montclair High School Football Day in Montclair. And I'm going to ask all the residents of our community to wear black and blue, the school colors, and wear Montclair on your shirts or on your hat, whatever the case may be. Let's root on these Cavaliers to win the semifinal game. You know, I don't know if Montclair High School has ever gone to the semifinals in the football CIF. But this is a great, just seeing all the social media in the last week, this is, the kids are excited. And the kids at the high school aside, not just the kids, obviously, the kids on the football team, the parents, and our community itself. So let's root on our Cavalier for this coming Friday. I do want to recognize Marcia's or team. Great job on the Veterans' Day Lunch there. Recognizing our seniors in the drive-through luncheon program and especially those veterans. Next meeting will be canceled. We will not meet at a meeting of December 6, since some of us will be attending the ICSE, used to be called International Conference Shopping Center, retail, basically retail shopping, retail conference in Las Vegas that'll be held, includes that day of December 6. And then finally, on the Real Estate Committee, the next Planning Commission meeting, Panera Bread will be on the agenda for condition use permits. So it looks very promising now that Panera Bread is coming to Montclair finally at the former Island location. So I will go ahead and start on my, how about I start on my left first? Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of quick things. First, I want to congratulate the Montclair Fire Department for their response this past weekend on a house fire. I believe it was a garage fire that engulfed the house, and then it engulfed the house behind them, if I understand correctly. But I want to really commend the fire department for their hard work and for how well they, how quickly they responded and how well they blocked off the gazillion lucky loos who were out there. As I was driving down the street, the sidewalks were loaded with people, but however they did it, the firefighters prevented them from going down and standing directly in there. So kudos to them for their hard work. And then also, I want to let you know that Montclair Place is also gearing up their holiday activities. Please go to their website. And look, they've got all kind of exciting things going on. And lastly, I want to talk about the Human Services Department. All of you know that the Human Services Department does things like having, do lunches, and they, you know, really do things, all the events, the social events for our community. But there's something, even though I've been around for many years, there's something I really did not understand, excuse me, about the Human Services Department until very recently. It seems to me that the work that they do is not just the work that they do. So when I have been with them during the senior lunches and watching them interact with the seniors, it's not a job. It's almost like those seniors are family. And so, you know, one person just lost her daughter. And not only did the city human services staff kind of surround them and support them in the way they could, they actually went to the funeral, some of them did, to support this resident of Montclair. That's not a job. That's connecting with people. And so, you know, kudos, Ms. Richter, for the work you and your team do for connecting with people, particularly during this time of COVID, where that might be the only connection they have in a day, is when they come through to get their senior lunch. So thank you on behalf of the, all the seniors in our community for the work that you and your team do. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez, now should we turn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure of attending Hasko Outlet's ribbon-cutting and grand opening on November 5, as did a few of my colleagues. I believe all of us were there except Mr. Rue. We missed you, Bill. I know you had prior commitments and engagement work. Yeah. So I wish that business the best. For those of you that are interested, it's at 8710 Central Avenue. It's at the old Harley-Davidson location. They... it's at 8710 Central Avenue. It's at the old Harley-Davidson location. They actually sell very reputable products of brand names. They're not knockoffs, as some people have said. They do get their inventory from Costco and other establishments at very reasonable prices. I decided to load up on all the disinfectants. And some of you guys may laugh because I'm the one that doesn't wear the mask much. And I, you know, I have this certain reputation of it being the anti-mask guy. Well, I stocked up on all the sanitation stuff just to play it safe. So, figured what the hell, why not? It was, it was a deal. It was two bucks a bottle and you could get them at Walmart for like six. I mean, heck, you can't pass a deal like that. So, kudos to Haskell. I attended the Veterans Day event on November 11th with Mayor Dutre out here in the parking lot to hand out meals to some of the seniors that came by, as well as certificates to the veterans of Montclair, honoring them for their service. Tanise said it very well with respect to the human services staff. So, I will piggyback on that and just second her comments. I've shared with Marcia my sentiments regarding staff and appreciation for them over the past year and that hasn't changed. They, they are superb. And I even expressed that on social media as well. I attended November 12th myself, the mayor, Councilmember Johnson and Martinez, the Montclair High CIF game on the 12th where Montclair advanced to the semifinals. We beat San Gabriel. It was just a blowout. I forgot the score, 48 to some to 13 or something like that or 12. But nonetheless, that said, Montclair High School is again playing November 19th this Friday. And I just got a text about a half hour ago from the Booster Club. The game time is 7:00 PM. So, 7:00 PM Friday, Montclair will play South Pasadena here in Montclair. And I believe if we win that night, we go on to the championship game for the Southern Division of CIF. So, any residents watching this either tonight or later on YouTube, please come, get your tickets online, go to the CIF site, buy your tickets for $10. I hopefully the price didn't go up. But buy your tickets online. You use your phone or device when you check in. They let you in the door. We need a strong showing to support our boys at Montclair High. I had a food drive on November 13th along with Bethany Baptist, or Bethany of Montclair and Calvary Chapel Montclair. My thanks to pastors Josh and Pastor Joe from both of those churches for hosting and co-hosting the event and holding the event. We were able to feed about 200 families that drove through and got boxes of food and many were blessed with more than one box. So, I'm very appreciative of the sponsors and those that supported that food drive. Real quickly, I did get some texts about 2, 3 o'clock this afternoon from Little League folks, just a concern with the time change that went on. The park lights have not been adjusted, so they're coming on at 6:30 or 7 around there and it's cutting into the practice time. I know that most of us teams, we have a time limit that we can keep the kids on the field. And if it's a little too dark and the lights aren't adjusted, it affects the time. So, if that could be addressed, if they could be turned on about 5:30 or 6:00 or so, both the field lights and the lot lights, it'd be appreciated. And then my usual update regarding the freeway construction, just a word of caution to any drivers using the 10 freeway going eastbound, so that is driving into Upland in Ontario. If you're going to be driving from the Indian Hillside in through Montclair, starting this week, the three right lanes of eastbound I-10 approaching Montevista will shift towards the right for approximately a quarter mile. So, we're going to have that zigzag effect. So, please don't assume the lanes are the same. They're going to be straight. They will be curved for at least a week. And it actually doesn't say how long, but just be cautious of the change when you're out on the freeway and as always, be cautious. With that, Mr. Mayor, I believe I am done.
And as far as the Little League lights, I know I met with the president of the Little League last Friday and she had a meeting with Fernando, I believe, today to discuss the light issue. So, Mayor Bill Tim Rue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With some of the events that have gone on, I have been unable to attend due to a very, very strong work schedule right now. It's, when you're a working professional, sometimes you can't always work your city things around your work things. And I need my paycheck, so I better try to get to as many things as I can. Thursday last was Veterans Day, formerly known as Armistice Day. It commemorated the end of the First World War, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month in 1918. In 1947, it was renamed Veterans Day to honor all veterans who served in any war or just served at peacetime at home or served in any capacity. And it is a day to give thanks to those who have served our country. Some of you have heard me say, we may not know them all, but we owe them all. And so, for all of the veterans, everybody in the city, in our city family who is a veteran, we thank you, all those in the city itself. And anybody you encounter who's a veteran, take a moment and say thank you to them. On the 9th, I was able to attend along with Mayor Dutre, the National Community Renaissance Hope Through Housing Awards. It was held at the Clermont Padua Theater. Some of you remember the old Padua Hills Theater if you've been around here long enough. It's now an event center. And they honored Congressmember Norma Torres and Assemblymember James Ramos, who represents parts of Rancho Cucamonga and then east, for their leadership in housing and their efforts to house families. So, it was a wonderful night to be there and to see two people from our, who we know from our community being honored. I also want to take a moment and thank Congressmember Norma Torres, we were talking about the Little League fields, for her real strong efforts on obtaining little over $2 million in funding to help repair the Little League fields, to help repair the snack bar and the announcement, the, the area where they do the announcing for the games. I really appreciate that and I hope this community does because it takes a lot of effort right now in Washington to get a lot of this stuff done. And she did it for this community and it should, and I truly appreciate that. We are not out of coronavirus yet. For those who say we are, I would suggest they keep reading because we are looking at a potential surge this winter. We saw one last year. It may not be quite as severe as it was last year, but it will be there. So, please receive your inoculation if you can do so. Receive your booster shot if you can do so. We're not out of this yet. Just because things are opening up doesn't mean we can relax. We need to continue to do what we've been doing so we can beat this thing. We heard about the events, December 2nd, the Christmas tree lighting, which will be wonderful, and the December 4th dashing through Montclair. Next Thursday, not this coming Thursday, the one after that, we will observe Thanksgiving Day. It is a special day in our country that we put aside for all the many, to give thanks for our family, our friends, and our many blessings that we have. Some will say, well, look at this year. It's been another tough year with so many people losing friends and family to coronavirus, so many difficult things going on. And I think in spite of that, we still have so much to be thankful for. All you need to do is pick up a daily newspaper and see about events across the globe and you'll be very thankful to be here. I am reminded of the words of President John Kennedy, who in November of 1961, in his Thanksgiving Day proclamation said, and it's appropriate for our times, "Let us observe this day with reverence and with prayer that will rekindle us and that will show us the way, not only to preserve our blessings, but also to extend them to the four corners of this earth. Let us by our example, as well as by, let us lead by our example, as well as by our material aid, and assist all peoples of all nations who are striving to achieve a better life in freedom." Have a good Thanksgiving.
Well, thank you. And I forgot to announce that the reason I'm wearing this shirt today, it's the Moncler Cavaliers shirt. So, again, Friday, we'll call it the Moncler High School Football Day here in the city of Montclair. Go Cavs and get out to the football stadium on Friday in Montclair. So, we're going to adjourn this portion of the meeting, go to closed session, and then we'll obviously come back out of the closed session to formally adjourn the meeting. Thank you for those who are here.